Good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming out for the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners. I can't remember a time that we've ever assembled both groups, so this is very exciting. It's also very exciting to be able to come together. I remember when we started this process, that was a very interesting time. It was also a time when we were contending with a pandemic, which unfortunately is still ongoing, but it may be somewhat less. Remembering back to this homework assignment, it wasn't the easiest homework assignment. The homework assignment was to take things like infrastructure, affordable housing, transportation, climate change, hazard reduction, land preservation, conservation, development density, future land use map, economic development, diversification, amongst other things, and bring them together into a symbiotic harmony of sorts. Is there a perfect plan? No, there is no perfect plan. A plan is a living document. It's a policy document. It's one we're always fine tuning. We decided to take it a step further and look at it through a lens of equity. It brought together multiple organisms, multiple different departments, agencies, along with Buncombe County, and decided to bring together conversations of those. And it provides flexibility. And it provides flexibility in a way that can be challenging sometimes, especially in a Dillon's rural state with a changing regulatory environment that we always must adjust our policies to. And in summary, we chose to be bold as a community and talk about our problems. And I think that's important because some communities don't talk about their problems. But the only way we find solutions to our problems and challenges is to get everybody talking together and then formulating a document that leads to changes to development ordinances and laws and other items such as that. With that being said, I'm very proud of where we are, and I'm proud of the journey and the outreach that we did over time. And with that being said, LeAnn King is here with Clarion Associates. She was the lead of our consulting team. And let's take it here, and the rest of the agenda, if you so choose, can stay as much.
I just wanted to kind of share a little bit, building off of what Nate said. I think this has been a really healthy and productive process with honest discussion and dialogue throughout, and I hope that all of you are proud. I know a lot of work has gone into this. If you had a chance to look at some of the materials that are up on the wall and the posters on the easels, it's just a really good reminder of how much work went into this process and into developing the public hearing draft of the plan that we're going to be discussing today. And I am very proud of the outcomes of this effort. I think it's one that is frankly award-winning. I really do think that you should be impressed and happy with the outcomes that your staff and that your steering committee and your constituents have been involved in with this process because it's really -- a lot of people have spent a lot of good time and effort thinking through and providing feedback through this process, and I think it's really made it a robust document as a result. So I'm happy to be a part of this. Thank you for inviting us to do that.
Next part of the agenda, we have the call to order. I would do the Commissioners first and then the Planning Board.
Thank you to Nate and LeAnn, to all the staff for the tremendous work that you've been doing on this, and we'll call this meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners to order.
I'd like to also send out tonight's affidavit because it's a tremendous effort and document that we have in front of us, and it's been a thrill to have been part of it, and so thank you on behalf of the Planning Board and myself, just as a citizen. I'm really, really grateful for that. And I will also call the meeting of the Buncombe County Planning Board to order.
Approval of agenda, same way.
And if we don't have any questions about the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda and follow?
Soon.
Second.
If you with the motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? The odds have it.
And we will also move to the chairman of the board of commissioners.
Soon.
All in favor?
All right.
Well, thank you all for joining today. This is not typically part of the adoption process that you go through to bring the Commissioners and the Planning Board together, but it's one that we like to recommend because it's a great opportunity for you all to speak to each other as we're kind of rounding the bend and closing in on adoption of the plan. It's an opportunity to hear from each other, ask questions, kind of share common thoughts about it. So we think that this is a great opportunity to kind of start this adoption process with this meeting and kind of sharing kind of our last thoughts as we button up the plan. There are a couple of things we're going to be talking about today. I've got -- I'm going to try to keep my presentation brief so that we can spend more time getting your reactions and comments while we're together. I'll provide an overview of the plan process, a little bit about the plan and what's in it and how it's structured, and then more specifically, what's changed in the public hearing draft of the plan from the public review draft that recently went through the public review process. And then from there, we'll kind of -- I'll stop talking, and we'll listen to you and answer any questions that you might have. So again, today, really, our focus is the March 2023 Public Hearing Draft of the Buncombe 2043 Comprehensive Plan. This is a policy guidance document that is required of all local governments in North Carolina that have zoning regulations. So that's kind of somewhat recent rule that the General Assembly required, but it's also good just for good community planning. I mean, name any successful organization, business, you know, government, and you'll see a group that has a plan in place. And so this is part of, you know, good governance, is putting together a comprehensive plan and thinking about the future, where you want to be and how you're going to get there, and having a collective discussion to decide the different approaches you want to take to get there. The purpose of the comprehensive plan, again, it's a policy guidance document, so there is some flexibility in terms of how it's interpreted over time, and you can make changes. Like Nate was saying, this is a living document. It's not intended to be set in stone. It's intended to, you know, change as things evolve, and we all know that, you know, the world's a very quickly evolving place these days. And so that's important to remember about this document, is it's intended to be flexible. But it's also supposed to provide a vision and guidance about where we all want to be heading to together in terms of the future of Buncombe County. So it, along with other plans, really sets the high policy priorities for the community, and that connects with a lot of other things, the strategic planning work that you all do as a county. That sets the kind of shorter-term plans, so we think about comprehensive plans looking out usually about 20 years in the future. Sometimes we project even beyond that. Work priorities are set on a more kind of shorter-term basis. You're looking more at five-year terms. The comprehensive plan can serve as an inventory of different actions and ideas to be accomplishing through that strategic plan effort. It also helps inform funding priorities through your budget and CIP process, and then there are things to be implemented, there are actions in the plan that you can choose to implement over time. And then we recommend that you assess progress, you know, whether that be kind of a semi-annual or however frequently you want to do that. So you can make sure that the goals that are included within the plan are being, you know, there's movement in the direction that we want to see through the comprehensive plan implementation. And then it's a cycle, so over time you will update it. Just as we were saying, plans evolve. There'll be a point in time where you'll decide, you know what, this plan really needs to be overhauled because enough has changed, there are enough new conditions that we need to take a fresh look at this. So a little bit about the plan process. Again, if you haven't, I highly encourage you to take a look at the great posters at the back of the room. They're really -- staff have done an excellent job summarizing all of the work that went into engaging the community. This is a four-phase process that kicked off in the fall of 2021. We had some, a little bit of preliminary work before that, but pretty much in the fall of 2021. So we launched the project then. Phase two was slightly extended due to COVID. We wanted to provide some more time for public engagement, and Omicron gave us a little bit of a challenge there, so we had to pivot a little bit. But that was important for establishing the vision and goals for the plan and hearing from the community about what their kind of fundamental interests are for the future of the county and things that they wanted to be achieving through this plan effort. And through that, we helped to develop the basics of the plan framework, the fundamental pieces. Phase three, we started to drill down a little more based on that guidance of the vision and goals to determine what are the specific policies, the ways that we're going to go about achieving the goals, and the actions and strategies in the plan. What are the things that we're actually going to do as a county to achieve the planned vision and goals? And so that was the opportunity to, again, engage with the community and get responses about different approaches and different tools that could be used and start to develop the more meatier sections of the plan, so to speak. And now we're really, with this meeting, we're kind of entering phase four, which is the plan adoption phase, where we're seeing how this all got pulled together. We've got the feedback from the plan unveil that happened at the end of phase three. We had a public review draft that was opened up to the public, and we got a lot of great input from several different groups, including residents of this county. And so we have the public hearing draft today that includes all of those comments. Public engagement stats, again, a lot of really robust engagement. I'm very, very proud to be part of this process and all the engagement that has gone on during. So 18 in-person and drop-in or virtual meetings, 95 intercept events, festivals, markets, et cetera, where people could learn and gauge about the project, 81 board and committee meetings, and as a result, and there's, again, more detail in the back if you're interested, that led to over 150,000 different inputs that went into this process. Those are kind of comments that were received from individuals to help inform how the plan would be shaped, and over 5,200 responses from community members overall. So I think a lot of really good engagement from the community. From the most recent public engagement window, that third round where we were sharing the public review draft that was conducted from mid-December through mid-February, approximately almost 1,300 people participated in that. And one thing that we see, and this is very common from project to project, is people will often only participate in one round of engagement, and they feel like they've had their voices heard and that they're satisfied with the participation that they've had. So we got new people every time we had another round of engagement. We've got, you know, there was, frankly, I think in most cases, the majority of folks that participated were new and hadn't participated before in the process, and I think that's true in this one. Over 200, nearly 300 people attended in-person, virtual, or hybrid meetings, over 25,000 inputs, kind of responses to specific questions, and almost 1,000 comments were submitted that were gone through and vetted, and we, you know, incorporated those adjustments. So really, what we're here today to talk about is the public review, the public hearing draft, which was the public review draft plus the comments received from residents and stakeholders, from Planning Board members, from the steering committee and staff. So all of that was collectively looked at and resulted in the public hearing draft. Obviously, a lot of discussions. I would say there weren't that many points of inconsistencies that we had to work through, generally speaking, and I have more information later that kind of talks about the nature of the comments, and we can kind of walk through those, the bigger adjustments as well. So in terms of the plan, there are some, you know, several chapters included in this plan. There's an introduction and executive summary if you want to get the quick bites about what's in the plan and what's really critical. There are seven policy chapters that are, were organized based on a lot of work that we did early in the process to identify what are the critical planning topics that we want to be focusing on in this process. And then there's a final chapter that really focuses on implementation, what's going to be done as a result of this plan, and how that coordinates with the strategic planning effort that the county already has in place. There are also appendices that provide information about the public engagement process, technical reports, et cetera, that can provide more information for those that want to do a deep dive on those. Throughout this process, at the very start, when we were proposing on working, getting to work on this project, you know, the RFP clearly stated this project was going to take an equity lens. We were going to be thinking about equity in every aspect of this plan, so not just who we invited and who we heard from in public engagement, but how the actual goals and policies and actions of the plan were going to impact people. And that was really a wonderful thing to be working on. I think that this plan goes really far in coming up with some interesting ways of accomplishing that as well that we'll talk about today. The lighter blue circles that are around the equity, those are those seven planning topics that we worked with the steering committee, tested with the public, and talked with other members of the community to kind of ensure that we had the right set of groupings of different topics that we wanted to be highlighting as the key priorities for this community. So these did evolve a little bit over the first, I'd say, six months of the project, but then stayed pretty consistent and steady as we worked on developing the plan itself. And around the edges, you'll see sustainability and regionalism. Those were two other important topics that we felt like we needed to be highlighting in this process that are also kind of important aspects of thinking about the future of the county and where we're heading. The plan is organized with kind of four key components of the framework, so vision themes are at the very top. That really gives us the high-level guidance about what this plan is trying to achieve and kind of bite-sized topics that are easy to understand quickly. Then for each of those seven policy topics, there is a specific goal that's a little bit more detailed than the vision themes and provides a little bit more specificity about what it is we want to accomplish related to the different policy topics. And then we have actual policies. And I'll touch on this in a minute, but those are really developed to be concise, so you didn't have many policies. But also, there's policy intent description in each of those that helps -- policies need to be kind of well-thought-out and well-documented, and so we wanted to make sure we were being thorough in thinking about how those policies would be implemented. And then that final, the actions, the specific to-dos that will be coming out of this process. And so all of those are kind of linked, as you can see in that pyramid. So the vision themes that are at the top there, these, we spent a lot of time working with a lot of different groups in the community, getting feedback and landing on these five. So the vision themes are that in 2043, 2043, the community vision is that Buncombe will strive to achieve equity, commit to sustainability, achieve livability and affordability, focus on conservation and root efforts in community. And I think, again, those are really helpful in kind of understanding what are the critical pieces that this county is really trying to accomplish through this planning effort. Mentioned that there are seven goals for each of the policy chapters. Those are really important in helping to identify specifically what the county is wanting to achieve, and those goals can be measured through a series of metrics that are, I'll share later, as part of the implementation chapter. In total, there are 35 policies, and again, part of this is because we really encourage communities to think not only about the maps you might use in development decisions and thinking about capital investments, but also the policies that are in the plan. And having a manageable number of policies is helpful for staff as they're preparing staff reports, and others that are reviewing those policies to think through, how does an individual project, you know, address each of the policies that are listed in the plan? And again, there's policy intent statements to help clarify, you know, what's intended by each of the policy statements. Forty-one total actions in the plan. Those are, again, connected to each of the seven policy chapters, and I'll share a little bit more about the types of actions when we get to the implementation section. And again, it does provide an inventory of actions for future strategic plan updates. So the comp plan can really be a tool as you're working on strategic planning in the future and thinking about different aspects of how those two plans connect and items that you want to be implementing through the strategic plan. There are several important new tools that are provided through this comprehensive plan that we hope will be very beneficial as you move forward in making decisions about development and investments in the community. So the first one, we call it the GEC map because it's a bit of a mouthful. It's the Growth Equity and Conservation Map. And this is, if you're familiar with our state statute or other communities, many have what's called a Future Land Use Map, and that's essentially what this map is. We gave it the name of Growth Equity and Conservation because we wanted to express with, through the name of the map, exactly what the intention of this county's, you know, kind of growth plan, equity plan, conservation plan is. And you'll see on the bottom of the map, there's a legend that identifies there are specific areas that are intended for growth, there's areas intended for conservation, there are some other areas that are, include the municipalities that have their own planning and zoning jurisdiction, and then there's this other important category called equity, again, that lens of equity being front and top of line in terms of how we want to view and develop this plan. Those areas are not mapped in this plan. I'll talk in just a moment about the intention of how that works in this process, particularly for review of legislative development proposals. So this graph just kind of shows you more intensive to least intensive land uses, again, thinking about equity across all of those. But we have four categories that are more growth-focused, the mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use areas one and two, and the walkable destination center. Those are places where the county, we did analysis, those are more appropriate for growth, given the conditions of the land, infrastructure investments, roadway, et cetera. Those are more suitable for growth as opposed to the conservation land uses that are more, either have some kind of development constraint or maybe there are active working lands, farmlands, important rural lands that we want to be protecting for a variety of reasons. And so those protected public lands, conservation working lands, rural community and rural center fall under that conservation category. So the next planning tool that I want to talk about is that kind of equity piece that's identified on the legend of the map but not actually shown as a geography on the map. And the intention is that as a legislative development proposal comes through, and what by that, kind of the easiest way to think about it is a rezoning proposal that's approved through a legislative process. As staff is preparing reports on a development proposal that comes in, there would be a three-step process that would happen. The first step is that they would look at the community index map and understand what's happening on that property and areas surrounding it, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. The second is the equity analysis tool. So those are a series of questions that they can answer regarding that project and how it might have either positive or negative impacts on the property and surrounding areas. And then third, to incorporate that analysis into the staff report so that the Planning Board, Board of Commissioners, can get the value of that information as you're making your decisions. And so the first step of that is, again, the community index map. This is a map that has actually been developed by, you know, a working group within the county. There's been a lot of effort spent thinking through the different layers that would go in this map. The wonderful thing about this map, too, is that it's getting updated over time with real-time data, so this is not something that's stagnant. You can, you can update as, you know, ACS data comes out, another data comes out. And again, the important thing here is really identifying difference And again, the important thing here is really identifying difference census geographic categories and how they, how different factors kind of play out across the landscape. So presence of high poverty rates, looking at median household income, households that are food secure, you can see the others on the list there, looking at those factors and how they play out in the community. So there's an understanding of the type of conditions that are in existence in a plate as you're making decisions about change in those communities. And then the second one is this equity analysis tool. These are the specific questions that were actually developed to, they were modeled from questions that you have looking at policies across the county beyond kind of land use and development for new kind of initiatives or new policies that you might be taking on as a county. You're probably familiar with GARE and this was developed as part of the process to kind of consider equity across the board in the county. So these, these questions were modeled off of those GARE questions and tailored to focus more on a development kind of condition and how you might evaluate development proposals as they come through. So again, the idea here is that staff would be reviewing these questions and providing responses in their staff reports. And then again, the result of that is that you all would have the opportunity to see that, that information as you're making decisions about a particular project. Another important tool is small area planning. So we, Bunkham County's not small. It's a large county. You know, realistically, we cannot evaluate every single parcel and site at a site scale like you would on a development proposal. And so one of the things that we do as part of comprehensive planning is we identify places that we expect there to be some significant pressure for change or we want to kind of manage change in particular areas. And so we identify places that are really kind of good opportunities for small area planning and doing more kind of closer deep dive, more detailed planning at a smaller geographic scale. And so that's one of the tools that we've included in this draft as well and identified several areas that we think, some of them are more kind of specific centers, some of them are more corridor plans that we think are important for consideration. There's also some language in the plan that talks about, this is not the, again, this is an evolving document, a living document. These are what we're identifying now, but there could be additional places that you want to do small area planning that could come up over time and the plan provides flexibility for that. In terms of implementation, a new tool, we have identified performance metrics. We do recommend that as you go forward with implementing the plan, these implementation metrics are a good guide. You might want to make some tweaks to them over time. There may be new data that becomes available to you. You know, there's kind of a balancing act of measuring the right thing that really gets at what, whether or not you're accomplishing the goal for the, for the policy topic and do you actually have the data to measure, you know, that progress over time? And so that's what we worked to develop. A lot of different staff members have been involved in discussions, getting to these performance metrics. But we know data changes all the time and new data becomes available. And so we feel like there should be some flexibility in terms of how that gets implemented to, to use what's best available at the time that you're implementing. And again, those could, those metrics could change over time as well. In terms of implementation, there are four key types of actions that are included in the plan, regulatory and guideline updates to your developer regulations, capital investment funding programs, further planning efforts and initiatives such as the small area planning, and then partnership opportunities. Obviously, the county doesn't have jurisdiction over everything that happens within the county and so there are many important partners to be coordinating and working with, including MSD, the municipalities, schools, et cetera. There are many important partners that play a role in growth and change in this community. And so those, those actions are identified for those partnership opportunities. Okay, so now I'm going to switch gears and talk about specifically what changed. So we, the public review draft was shared again mid-December through mid-February. We got a lot of great feedback on that plan draft and so we took that feedback and made a lot of revisions to the plan and I'm going to walk through some of the key ones that we, that we made changes to. So, you know, some of this was really kind of planned clarification language. For example, that equity section, we didn't necessarily change the intent of it, but we did a fair amount of rewriting to make it a little more clear, make it much more clear about what the intention of it was and how it was proposed to work. We had, you can see the statistics there in terms of kind of the inputs that were provided. I shared that previously. So a couple of the other kind of map related edits that were made, we had some discussions and I think this came about as maybe part of planning board discussions on the institutional category on the GEC map and that it really initially encompassed Warren Wilson and Biltmore. But we felt like it really needed to kind of go beyond that, that there were some other properties that kind of fit, that were unique kind of campus or other kind of institutional settings that if they were to change, it would be important to kind of partner and think about the changes to those properties. And it's very difficult in a comprehensive planning process to determine exactly what would happen. And if you can imagine, if Biltmore were going to change, which I don't think will ever happen, but you know, that would be a big conversation to think about how that might change, same for a lot of these other properties. So what we, the kind of resulting solution was to use the conference center resort district category in your ordinance to identify places that have that kind of, you know, resort or campus setting and to identify those on the map as institutional that are opportunities for small area planning efforts if there were ever a point in time where these places were going to be proposing significant changes, that you'd want to take a more close look at what those changes were and kind of how that evolves over time.
Leanne?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a, what's probably an annoying point, at the risk of sounding like my GIS professor from college, I think we're still, we have too many pinks and reds maybe?
Okay.
That are still hard to differentiate. That would be mine.
Okay.
My hope would be that maybe, you know, when you look at a screen versus printing, it's like hard to see the different shades of colors.
That's helpful.
We're going to have this for a long time or so.
Okay. The, as part of that institutional category, at one point in the process, the landfill got added to that and we decided that that was really kind of an odd use and didn't really fit with how that institutional category was evolving. And there are other kind of community facilities, so to speak, that are not kind of called out specifically because again, really the focus of this growth equity and conservation map is about the type of new development or conservation that we want to be imparting, knowing that there are schools and other facilities that are located throughout that we don't necessarily have to kind of muddy the map with, so to speak. So that reverted back to the rural community category because that's the intention of the surrounding area that it falls within. The Beaver Dam community that you can see just kind of east of Woodson there, there was a fair amount of feedback from that community about the, what was formerly called complete community, which we now call mixed use neighborhood on the map. There was a mixed use neighborhood, as you can see, let me see if my clicker will, pointer will work, you can see here, that there was more of that complete community slash mixed use neighborhood going up to kind of the Pisgah National Forest area. And the, the request was to reduce that and make that more rural. And so that change has been made on the map and is included in the public hearing draft of the map. Similarly, for Penner's Cove, a little further south, there was a request from members of that community to change some of the complete community slash mixed use neighborhood that was up here and to kind of reduce it and make it more rural, particularly in kind of this area right here. There was also an addition of a new mixed use one area that's kind of their commercial area. This was an opportunity, and again, this is to, maybe to your point, it's hard to see this pink here on the map that shows up right here below. So this was originally identified as mixed use neighborhood and now this small area here, it's along, I believe that's 25, is mixed use one. We also added a new, we'll call spread, a couple of, you know, pages within the plan that further articulates the intention of small area planning and includes the map for the particular places that the plan is recommending small area planning be conducted. The plan does not specify necessarily priorities. We feel like that's part of implementation of this plan that you all can determine as, you know, the leaders of the community and thinking about how you expend resources and where you want to be focusing, you know, that there's some flexibility to determine that on an annual basis. And again, flexibility to accommodate a future small area planning geographies that might be identified as priorities for the county.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
We had talked on the planning board about the MSD potential expansion areas. Were those included in, you know, the small area plan designations, like are those areas that we might see some MSD expansion that kind of?
Yes, they were included. Leanne, if you want to go back to the overall.
GEC map.
Specifically looking at the corridor. Lester and Fairview were, Fairview's a little more baked in, but Lester, there's still a lot of sort of logistics to be considered in terms of that area. So to the best practical point that we could, we did take that into consideration with this map.
And that's the summary of the kind of high level, you know, changes that we made. Again, there were many kind of smaller detailed changes, just mostly clarification, adding some definitions, helping to make sure that some of the content that people weren't quite getting was made more clear in this final draft that we have in front of you today. So happy to take any comments, questions, requests for adjustments. One thing, we'll talk about it, I think, towards the end again, but I did want to share, it was in the cover memo that was attached to the public hearing draft. Because we're moving through this process of adoption in a fairly, you know, quick pace in terms of the scheduling of meetings, how we're managing the comments is that we won't be making actual changes to the plan itself, which can also be confusing to people that might be kind of following this process. So we'll have a memorandum that memorializes any recommended or requested changes by these two bodies and we'll track that over time between the various meetings that will be conducted. So it's very clear what's changing from meeting to meeting. So I'll hand the floor over.
I'll kick it off. As part of the planning board, I've mainly focused studying, you know, the built environment and that sort of thing, but I was thinking this morning about mental health and I noticed that starting on page 120, there's a whole section on health and recreation. And then on page 129, in the actions review, it talks about develop a plan to, number seven, provide equitable access to health services and healthy lifestyle choices. Does this mean in the bigger picture that that would be a process of the health department to, you know, figure out equitable access to mental health services? How will that roll out, I guess, is my question, something like that? And my concern is based on many years ago, under former administration that I won't mention names of, Blue Ridge Mental Health was shut down. It's now 356 Biltmore Mental Health Services. But that group was actively developing affordable housing for people with mental illness. And I just wonder if we can, you know, swing back to that focus in the future and have, you know, an effort for both equitable mental health and affordable housing for those folks.
I think the attempt here was to look more at social determinants of health and how the interface might work with equitable, more equitable access to things like greenways, make sure that there's the appropriate concurrency management that we're planning for our growth areas as it relates to services related to like EMS bases, even hospitals. And to the broader extent, I think that's that partnership of making sure that we stitch it all together with our multiple agencies in the county, make sure we're all talking to each other so that we do plan for enough of those type of facilities. But immediately to get started where we can be most impactful is making sure that there is enough of a service in a particular area rather than have it clustered in specific areas where it's not as convenient to folks, whether that be a community center, whether that be police presence, fire, that sort of thing.
Thank you. And I'll just add while we're on that page, also the local manager of the action crew, just making sure that when we're going out and talking to these communities that we're, that we actually are talking to and learning, because there's maybe an assumption saying they're lacking community gathering areas, but we need to learn from the community kind of where those gathering areas are and how they see that as we're working to enhance it.
And that's, I think, a good opportunity for the small area planning process to help really inform, what are the community benefits that that, that community might want to be incorporating into their future built environment?
I just really like how the equity piece was built into what we presented to the board, just how it's going to be about it for what we do and helping us understand what we need to be doing.
I want to echo what Nancy just said on that. And my question back is, how do we educate our community on this change and this new focus around planning and equity? I'm really excited because this is such a, such a central focus of our comp plan, which ties in so nicely to the rest of the work of Bunkham County. But I'm curious what that's going to look like and how we, you know, get the rest of our community, our development community on board with, with our objectives.
Wow. That one, that one can sometimes be a bit tricky. I'm proud of the efforts we've done so far in terms of getting folks accustomed to the fact that I think that the way we've done things in the past is maybe not sustainable in the future. So whether that mean like, and we're seeing it play out in real time, whether that mean as our aging society needs smaller lots to maintain or different housing types or the fact that if we're trying to conserve and preserve property, at the same time, that means we have to bring density to more areas that have water and sewer. And it's absolutely jarring sometimes to take phone calls and, and you never take anything for granted in planning. You always have to realize that some people just don't know, that move here and think that water and sewer is out in the nooks and crannies of the county. It can be a very difficult and daunting task and one that I think was important to capture in this book so that we all are seen in front of the same book and that we all have the same message when it comes to folks about understanding, doing to others and that sort of thing. But there's no easy answers. Obviously, in planning, sometimes if two parties walk away and they're unhappy, maybe sometimes that can be chalked up as a win. And that's what I would have to say about that, but I think it's one that we'll just have to continue to work together on.
Okay. And just some ideas from other communities and thinking about Wake County after their comprehensive plan was adopted. And even as kind of part of that, there could be opportunities to, once the plan is adopted in its final form, that you could present that to, you know, the Realtors Association, home builders, you know, the local home builders group, other kind of organizations that focus on development. I don't know if you have a local ULI, you know, those types of groups can be really helpful to kind of roll this out through and make them aware that there's some pretty significant changes that we want you to be aware of in terms of what this plan is wanting to accomplish and that the process for development review as a result is going to change and maybe walking them through some of that example. That might be one way to help roll it out specifically with that community.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thanks, Nick.
And I, I think it's going to be critical that we monitor this and really make it a living document and annually at a minimum, we look at it because that's the only way we'll make sure that this will be implemented over time and that's going to be the critical piece of it. You know, it's got to become what we say a living document. I think that's going to be critical, similar to what we've done with the five-year plan with the county, we're making.
And to your point, I think that that's one of the items that, you know, it's not over and done. The next part comes, those all-important texts. The next part comes those all-important text amendments that really shape our rules and laws. And we're going to bring those in buckets, things that group them similar. And those are going to be important back to Amanda's point of how do we then educate the community? And we do it by pieces and parts to eventually get to. And of course, there will be check-ins to your point to make sure that we're making good progress towards our goals.
I want to work to other infrastructure and energy, and it may be in here, I just missed it. But with the, I think you should make that appropriate technology, your storage capacity. We all have different renewable energy and all that, but whether it's battery storage or kind of other innovative technologies coming down the road, I think we need to ensure that those are compatible.
I have some exciting news.
I will look at the plan.
Very soon, we expect to receive a project from Duke to the Board of Adjustment that will incorporate both the solar farm. And as we've all been waiting for many years for technology to finally be able to capture it, it will have a battery storage component on a commercial scale. Coming soon.
Could I ask a quick question about mechanisms of how we interact with adjoining counties, other partners that are not really, they have an impact on the plan, but they don't necessarily have to live or die by what we're doing here and how those kinds of discussions will go forward.
That's a great point. And going here when we started, again, back to the homework assignment, we didn't make an easy one for us, and we did that by design. But one of the things we sought to do is silo deconstruction. We don't want to hear anymore about, well, that's DOT, they do this, or that's Duke Energy, they do that. At the end of the day, we all have to work together to achieve our goals. So for instance, when we talked about, you know, DOT, we don't do sidewalks or we don't do crosswalks. But now we have out in Swanerohwa, you know, a clustered community where people can now safely get to the grocery store and cross 70 in a safe way. This is an example of that type of partnership. I think next we work together with those organizations, specifically with MSD and water providers in terms of areas where we think it makes sense, based on the maps we just showed you, to look at, okay, here's our plan that's been adopted. Here's our areas that it makes sense to look at expanding those services. Or we create things like a multimodal plan and we look at and we study goat paths that we see along existing transportation corridors, and those get built out for sidewalks. And then we work with other departments specifically like Parks and Rec where it makes sense to build a new park or put connecting greenway. And then it becomes a regional conversation, to your point.
Nate, you reminded me of an observation. When I read this, it was kind of like I had two high-level thoughts, one around housing, one around transportation. I thought the plan does a fantastic job at describing where we kind of don't want growth and don't want development and what types of development we don't want. But it gets really close, maybe not far enough for me personally, but it gets really close to talking about how we still need housing, still need development. So I feel like if you combine a couple of the sections together, it gets to where I think it needs to be. Because it talks about housing and growth, right, and in the economy section. For transportation, you reminded me, I kind of had the opposite reaction where it talks about what type of transportation improvements we want. It kind of leaves out the controversial part of talking about what we don't want. And you're describing how it's unsafe to cross I-70. And we say like 11 different ways in here how we want to build infrastructure that's safe, but we don't say, DOT, we don't want you to build roads like that in areas where people need to walk that are going to be unsafe. You know what I mean? So like, is there value in describing what we don't want to have built?
I think you want to build yourself in enough flexibility in this document. And then I think what you're going to see after that are things like the all-important multimodal plan. So when there's an improvement or a repaving job, that we actually make sure that we qualify for the Complete Streets program and make sure that that side path or the sidewalk or the greenway gets built to complement. If you wanted to take another more granular action, I think that that belongs in possibly another plan or as another step. You want to make sure you don't paint yourself in a corner with this particular plan.
Like in a small area plan?
Sure.
Yeah.
That's a prime example. So that gives you the ability to actually look at design guidelines, to look at standards to the level you were speaking of, that speak to the nature of things like road diets.
Yeah.
You know, I know that DOT has moved away from five lanes. It just doesn't make sense to run a turn lane all the way down when you're actually turning into a left. So I think we need to make great use of our existing rights of way easements. That goes beyond just DOT, I think that goes to MSD, water, yeah, Duke. Because we can make use of those for our other goals that we're trying to meet specifically, understanding that things like greenways are very expensive to build.
Okay.
If we go back to Commissioner Al's comment about the appropriate storage technology, we're looking at edits that there potentially consensus around. And so I want to check in that there is interest in making an edit about appropriate storage technology over 197, under Action Number Two. Is that first one over there?
197.
Is it what you're asking is, if we consensus that add that in, is there only one set under Action Two to make news of exploring appropriate storage capacity?
And if there is, then that goes in the agenda that we are, we shouldn't be able to have all of that.
I support it, I'm just trying to think of a way to say it.
Is it longer than just thinking about being completely totally? Yeah.
It's more of what Nancy called that, like, storage capacity, not just the.
Yeah.
Because there's like electric grid scale battery storage that has more of a zoning component than there's home battery storage, which is still within the realm of local government, but not necessarily related to zoning.
So are you still suggesting under Action Two?
Yeah, but maybe a new bullet that's separate because I think that topic, as I'm reading through these, is really kind of unique and that's what it probably deserves a little bit.
Yeah.
Makes sense to everyone.
Maybe, yeah, maybe leave out the word battery so we don't just say energy storage, that's what you think?
Yeah. Yeah.
Those are different types.
Any other thoughts or questions? I will say that you all have done a really good job of having meetings with Planning Board and Commissioners throughout this process so that you've probably seen this plan enough times that you feel like you know it pretty well. You're probably ready to adopt the thing. So I think, I think that's great that you all have been involved. Not all communities get the chance to do that, and so I don't think that you all probably know this document pretty well at this point.
I want to make sure there's nothing missing because we know that this is our guidance down in the next several years. Is there anything missing? Thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing with the batteries. As you're thinking, vision, or even if you have a red plan, as you're thinking of the four blocks of gathering site in Form 43, was there something in your mind that you want to make sure that we capture in this document? But then we can take this here and kind of tell us that.
This is less an answer to that question, but related, I promise. Can you just, you all maybe describe how you see us using this plan in conjunction with the strategic plan? Sort of to Al's point, there'll be two living documents that coexist and I think complement each other in a lot of ways. And also, we'd just sort of love to hear leadership's vision, staff leadership vision on how you see that plan out.
I'll have to make an answer as well. We announced that we want an inventory here and we did so much public engagement that we have inventory here that you know, guys, that comes into consideration.
Yeah.
But for us, this plan, instead of those annual check-ins, was really going to make this happen. The living document is those steps and methods that we talked about, is that regulatory piece that needs to come next. Because what it brings the plan to us, the regulations that have been written on there is going to be guided by this plan. So that's the piece that we see on that field in our, and our next iteration of our strategic plan will come from the data that the community already gave us of this plan.
And to that point, I think that's why it was so important to engage the youth of the community. Because if you think about 20 and 30 years out, you know, we've got to capture them because they're the next folks that are going to be making public comment before the Commissioners. And that makes me feel really old. But I think that it can influence, because when you think about a strategic plan, then you're really taking the wide lens and really narrowly focusing down in five-year chunks. So you're talking about funding decisions. So I think the two perfectly complement each other, and that's in that regard.
Question I have, a topic that's near and dear to me is education and the community. How would this plan fit when it comes to looking ahead and we're talking about education and planning for the future? And especially talk of adding equity to it.
That's a great question, Commissioner White-Suds. And one of the things that we're having to plan for increasingly is trends. So we always have to think futurism when it comes to a comprehensive plan. One of the projects that we're seeing more of are charter schools. So how does that, how does that sync up with concurrency that we need for, say, public schools compared to charter schools, compared to regulations that we might want to tailor together in this plan? Or ordinance changes that we would want to see? I will tell you this, interestingly enough, one of the main things that we've had to sort of plan for and that the pandemic brought to the forefront was traffic management around schools. When I was in school, we rode the bus, you always rode the bus. Now it seems like more and more people want to drive children. So there is a queuing situation that occurs with schools that we probably need to look into as well in terms of even design of these sort of institutions. I'm not a school expert, so maybe there's, I might be missing some things that others might want to add to that, that we want to have just part of the conversation.
Okay, and this is one of those, when we work on comprehensive plans, we try to take the lens of physical planning because that's ultimately, at the end of the day, what the comprehensive plan is really talking about. It's anything that has kind of a physical planning, you know, influence, whether it be conservation or development, infrastructure to serve it, facilities, public facilities that provide services to different areas, et cetera. Schools are always the tricky one because they obviously have an impact on growth, there's obviously a physical presence. You all are the funders of those schools, but ultimately in terms of curriculum and how that plays out, you're more of an influencer instead of having direct authority. One of the things that we included in the plan is a list of different areas where that kind of, that are somewhat outside the direct scope of the comprehensive plan, but are no less important. And that to me kind of speaks to that whole topic of partnership and thinking about working with the school districts. So we've tried to capture the sentiments of the community about how education will be enhanced over time and the focus on that for a variety of different reasons. With some ideas about, you know, working with AV tech, working with the public school districts, et cetera. But we know that that's a little bit kind of on the peripheral, so to speak, of the main objective of the comprehensive plan. So there's probably other planning products or processes that are better suited to dealing with those issues, if that makes sense. But again, try to memorialize it in this plan because it was an important topic that people brought up.
Because Nate said it, I had another point I wanted to make, but I'll touch on it first. Having experienced the reality of having a kindergartner start this year. And some of what we talk about from land use and how we design can be the more expensive option of addressing what was the problem for us here in Hall Creek was that they literally didn't have the bus drivers. And so we were getting called to come and pick up our children in the afternoon or not having transportation in the morning because they're simply not paying enough to get people to drive the buses. And that would be an infinitely more inexpensive way of addressing that situation than necessarily redesigning our buildings. But that's just me digressing because of how many times I got called to come pick up my son. So the two points, you had asked, Ms. Pender, what's missing? I don't know that it's missing, but maybe this is more of an underline for me because throughout this process, I think the next step is the most important. How you actually execute this is how you achieve all of this, this is a vision. But I think resources, both internally for our planning staff, and then where I want to underline is, I work in virtually every single one of these communities and the surrounding counties. And particularly, and I'll just pick a couple, you could pick Woodfin, you could pick Weaverville, you could talk Madison County, and you could talk about McDowell. They do not necessarily have the resources from a planning standpoint to help us achieve what we would see as a vision that is consistent between the communities. And so I think at Boncomb County, if we really want to achieve these things, and you also look at this map as a whole, if you're looking at the equity map, there's a huge, essentially gray donut hole in the middle of the county. And that if we provide as a county resources to these communities so they can plan better internally, that then can take pressure or better complement the plans we have for our maps here and our vision. So to the extent there's a way to underline how we may need to step in or offer internally those resources to other governments or partners, that may be a better, a more effective way of achieving what our vision is. I also look at that 25 corridor leaving from Weaverville up to Madison County, that's becoming the new entrance way because of the opportunities in Madison County. And then we're going to end up with a transportation corridor from an outside county coming into ours. So I don't know that it's missing, but I feel like underlying that and saying we may have to do more than we otherwise would have needed to externally to get what we want internally.
I guess in response to Ms. Pender's question, my vision would be that, the reason I ask about the small area plans is that, just like what's evolving in Swanerohwa, which is so beautiful, that other areas of the county could combine affordable housing near schools, near daycare, near recreation. And then bring in alternative public transportation opportunities for those folks, maybe smaller buses that run and that sort of thing. So that families really could achieve this kind of live, work, care for your family location. And, you know, the community oriented development ordinance, so far, I think that's just so great that you guys did that. And Nate deserves a lot of credit for pushing that. I'm hoping that as the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board approve those, any type of multi-family in these outlined areas, that we can encourage them to utilize the community oriented development to densify and then add some affordable units as well. And then the last thing I want to say is that, having been a single mother for a long time and low income, that when, you know, when we built MHO, I'm not there anymore. When MHO built East Haven, in any of these development projects, including the privately owned ones, there's an opportunity. owned ones, there's an opportunity to build community space. You're building all this stuff, right? You can build a daycare, you can build community space in collaboration with other groups in the county that can bring in healthcare services, mental health and all that. So I see a really great future in Buncombe County to utilize the small area plans to combine all of this together.
I was just going to respond to the comment that you were making, and I apologize, I can't see your. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
No.
On page 170, Action 7, this is under the Regency Conservation Framework, Chapter, Action. There's one called Coordinate Information Sharing and Joint Decision Making with Neighboring Jurisdictions. And I think a lot of what this is talking about is the county's role as a convener and kind of supporting initiatives, particularly with the municipalities that where the county doesn't have direct authority, but can be supporting efforts and thinking about how all these pieces fit together within the framework of the county. It talks specifically about information sharing and kind of potentially utilizing either Land of Sky or some other way to kind of have more regular meetings of probably elected officials to talk about some of these really critical group issues. And that's been done in some other communities where we've worked. And there's also information sharing protocols. We don't necessarily have staffing included within this, so that would be something else that would be kind of in addition to that potentially. But I think this is probably the right place, if that were going to be added, for it to be folded in.
And that's really the point I was trying to make, is convening is nice.
Right.
And it's one thing. But I'll use Madison County as an example. They have one person who does planning for the entire county. There's no way that they can have a meaningful conversation about how to match their corridors with ours with one person who can buy, they would admit cannot handle the current volume that is going on there. So I'm not saying Buncombe County pays for that, but that may be a perfect example of using the Land of Sky. Again, pooled resources that allow for the professionals that are needed in each of these communities to effectively plan together, because we can share the information, but if they don't have the time to deal, do anything with it, we're not making the progress.
Is this a way to, as commissioners, though, for us to better collaborate as we're each serving on various boards and commissions? As part of our county commissioner role, you know, Commissioner Sloan and Newman and I serve on the NPO, Commissioner Wells is on Land of Sky. And how do we start to better share that information about what's happening with each of those entities with each other? I know, you know, there's recently been some conversations with NPO and what that looks like in terms of transportation and travel, and how important, you know, our roads are to ensure that folks in Madison County have access to what Buncombe offers and to Henderson and vice versa. And so I'm just wondering what that structure could look like for us to better collaborate and share the information, because I think, I hear what you're saying, John, and I think it makes a lot of sense. But I think there's some onus back on us to better share the committee, commission, and board work that we're each doing to help ensure that we're in that direction.
I think that's, this is the opening salvo to that conversation. I think this is truly a regional approach and knowing that we are, we are a draw for all of Western North Carolina. We are a true gateway community. Some of the issues and challenges that we deal with are not necessarily suited to the population size that we have. To, you know, John's point, everybody's point here is the fact that if you look in the surrounding communities and you look at a place like Marion, you look at Old Court, boards are coming off windows. I mean, these communities are growing because there's a push-pull that happens every day. And these kind of conversations need to happen so that we have truly sustainable conversations that happen between our member agencies and local governments. And if you look over at what happened in Canton with the loss of that industry there, I mean, these are impactful to all of us, because whether that be that you're moving people from one industry that's closing down to having to retrain them to do positions in Buncombe County, this is absolutely that conversation. So I would say 100 million times 10 to the nth degree.
I'm wondering if, in terms of kind of the minutia of, you know, how you might operationalize some of that, if that might be better suited outside the comprehensive plan, maybe either as part of the strategic plan or just kind of part of your operational changes? Does that make sense?
Yes, I don't think it belongs in this at all.
Leanne, do you want to, I think that's appropriate at this time to point out, I think it's, there's no page number on it, it comes right after page 200. This is where you, we wanted to capture and memorialize additional community ideas. There's no easy solutions, but it's, we need to have a conversation about them. So I would think that that's an appropriate place to probably lead off with that.
Nate, I've got a random question. I recall a draft long ago that I don't think mentioned planning for, or allowing for seniors to age in place. That language was, is it in there, is it in here now? That language wasn't there before.
So there's a couple of things on, in that regard. I think that that's, we have a, there's an aging plan. There is a couple of things that we've already wove into like programs like the community-oriented development. It has not been forgotten. That's absolutely something that we want to make sure of when we do our diversification of housing types that we plan for. One idea might be this type of cottage development, which is a smaller sort of variable housing plan. We know that things like single-level living are desirable. Even things like to the granular detail of wider door frames and things like that are things that we need to plan for. Having recently gone through two deaths in my family, this really hits home.
Yeah, okay. Now you got me. Tell me more about this diversification of housing types.
Yeah, so I think it's back to the point where we know that the single-family, single-family lifestyle is really not a sustainable pattern. We simply don't have the land for it, we don't have the infrastructure for it. So what we're trying to do is look at other options for maybe looking at having staff have more flexibility in what they review versus what goes to the Board of Adjustment. We will bring to you in additional text amendments, some ideas that speak directly to aging in place and then diversification of housing types. And then there's that community conversation again with getting folks to come to, it's perfectly all right to have a townhouse development next to a single-family pattern, type of development. We're going to deal with a lot of infill, we're going to deal with a lot of what's called estate lots, where you might have had somebody within, even within a municipality that has seven acres, one house. So as those people sort of age out, you're going to have people that buy those properties and want to convert them. We want to make sure we don't waste any land. I think that's one of our key goals that we can probably all agree with.
Can I go back to the conversation about regionalism and see, is there consensus to make a change on page 201 to emphasize that collaboration with neighboring counties? Are you satisfied with the existing language? It's 201, but it's not actually a page number.
Not really, thank you.
It's after page 20.
It's after that, thank you. Sorry about that.
So under the additional community ideas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There's a UBI in here. What a great page.
Into the existing, into what page?
On 200, there's four park issues.
Leanne, where's the one on?
The one that I was mentioning earlier?
Yeah.
That was the, it's page one, hold it. Let's see here, I haven't got a pointer to it. Page 170, Action 7, yeah.
Amanda, did that one capture what you were wanting on 170 under Action 7?
On 170, that was the figure. I'm in a trial hearing in this room today, I apologize.
The last two bullets, I think, well, the first bullet kind of speaks to this idea of the county as a convener and having, you know, kind of higher level discussions about key issues. That third bullet's focusing on kind of joint planning with neighboring communities and MSD. And then the final one is really about information sharing and kind of coordination on development projects of interest that are on the edges of, you know, boundaries, interstate boundaries.
I think from a high level, it does, I just, I don't want to lose sight of how that, some of that onus of communication and sharing is on us as commissioners.
Yeah.
To do.
Yep.
And one true sort of example for the benefit of everyone in the room, a lot of people know this already, but if you want to talk about a truly regional system, if you think about MSD, it serves now a big chunk of Henderson County. So I think that what we're also seeing is that, again, with the loss of an industry in Canton, a lot of people don't know, but that industry treated all the wastewater for the town of Canton. So we have to think about impacts, ripple effect in our area, because we're just not as resourced as other, like, communities like Charlotte or Flatter, I always say down east. But those are real-world implications that we always have to think about when we move along in this conversation.
Nate, what is the timeline for rolling out all the text amendments? Like, how many years does this take? What's the plan for it?
And there it is. I'm going to let, and Jillian, you can jump in here, but I think what we would like to do, and we want to make sure that we're cognizant of the Planning Board and the Commissioners with all the work that they also have to do, is that we are going to very soon roll out sort of a preliminary timeline or a Gantt chart that breaks text amendments down into priorities. And I would anticipate that there will be some soon, and then we would probably look at a staggered sort of two- to five-year sort of timeframe. The text amendments themselves, I think, are something that we could go right into, but I think some of the locked-year goals are going to take a lot longer to achieve. And we always have to also make sure, back to the changing regulatory environment, there are a lot of bills being considered right now in the General Assembly, so we always have to make sure we're watching what happens there as well.
Anybody else have anything else they wanted to share?
Yeah, questions, comments?
I read a lot of these for my day job, and this one is, it looks great, it's fun to read. That's my last comment.
That's good. I like fun to read, too. That's not what we get very often.
It is, it's like. It's designed what?
Well, this was, I'm not going to give all the credit. There are a lot of people, including Nate, Jillian, Shannon, and Haley, that were involved in this process, Emily.
I just want to say thank you to our incredible staff, Clarion and Associates, our Planning Board, our Steering Committee, who, I know this has been a very heavy lift, and you all have spent a lot of time on this. And I agree with Parker, it's really fun to read. That's a great way to say it. And I think it's really exciting about what this means for the future of Buncombe County in terms of our planning, our growth, and how we move forward in a really exciting way. So thanks to each of you for the incredible amount of hours and work that you've put into this and also engaging our community in a really exciting and engaging way, too. Thanks, y'all.
And I just.
No, I was just going to say, I've read it from beginning to end and didn't go to sleep. So you've done a good job, Paul.
I'd just like to add that the thing that I think pleases me most about this is when we first started, one of the big goals was to make sure that we had the voices of the community heard. And I know there was a lot of skepticism about how all of that would happen, and I truly do think that it did happen because of the way everybody planned and the diversity of the Steering Committee, the diversity of the people that responded to the surveys and just the community engagement in general. And I know the staff did a tremendous job in making that happen, and that's a part that I really love about it.
I do want to chime in and say, I agree, all the names that we've mentioned, but I cannot leave without saying thank you to William and the communications team, because it was that group that really got that community engagement and the numbers drawn up. But then, when we say it's great to read, their skill set, too, of having that edit part to make it fun to read, so thank you, William and your team as well, especially in the background, I know you like to be in the background, but I'm putting my friends over there, so thank you.
So if we don't have any more comments, maybe we could just summarize, I think we've got two, is there two that I could? So I had, we need to change the pinks and reds on the map.
It's a good point.
Yeah. And if that's our biggest change, then we're doing pretty good.
There's a solution, they're super good, yeah.
Yeah, yes. And then the infrastructure.
Again, I think that was a couple.
Storage. Right, energy storage language added to that one action. Okay, easy memo. All right. So in terms of next steps, we, so April 19th today, we've had our joint work session. The next meeting will be coming to Planning Board on May 2nd to have the formal public hearing and request endorsement of the plan, that it move forward to the Commissioners for a public hearing, which is currently scheduled on May 16th. And again, we're going to be tracking any kind of adjustments between meetings via memo, so it's very clear like how things would be changing to the public hearing draft as we move forward. So we'll come to the May 2nd meeting with a memo that has the two items that we just discussed. Any questions about the process or moving forward? All right, sounds like folks are interested in implementation, so. That's good, that's good. Well, thank you all, this has really been wonderful.
Anything else from staff that we need to handle with this? Okay, any other comments from Commissioners or Planning Board members? Okay, with that, thank you all very much, we appreciate everyone's time, and it was really great to be together here today with the Planning Board. We appreciate that joint collaboration. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Understood? I have it, thank you very much.
And we also need the same motion from the Planning Board, and we also thank you for meeting with us for the community, a good experience, and hopefully we can do it again. A motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?